City Council Special Meeting. Call for Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, 5:15 under session here at Council Chambers with all members of Council being present. This time we'd like to take a moment of reverence for all our military men and women serving our country, not only here but abroad, and once again for all those medical professionals that are in the front line with this COVID-19 situation, pandemic, that God keeps them safe. Citizens Communications, at this time, Dr. Hector Alvarez, would you like to address the Council?
Yes. Would I call there?
Yes, up here.
It's supposed to be here.
You can stand anywhere.
Yes.
At down. We've got mics over there.
Yes, we have mics over there.
Okay. Well, first of all, yes, my name's Hector Alvarez. I'm a local dentist here, Dr. Hector Alvarez. And, you know, today, basically, I was searching for which cap to wear, you know, because I wear many caps here in town. But I think all of them would be appropriate at this time. You know, as you all know, you know, I'm part of the school board, I'm a parent, and I'm a son, and also an owner of a small dental office here in town, and a healthcare provider. And, you know, like you all mentioned, it's, you know, I'm really proud of our healthcare system, you know, that isn't the front lines facing this terrible crisis at this time. And I just want to commend them, and I do want to send out my personal prayers for them and for all of us in reality. And one of the reasons I'm here is, one is to actually, you know, right now, there's not a lot of things to say, but, you know, I do want to congratulate the Council, I want to congratulate the county, and I want to congratulate all the entities that you guys are working together with, because that's what it's going to take to get above and beyond what we're dealing with today. It's amazing, the job that you guys do, and it's so difficult, you know, being on the board myself, on several boards, it's a difficult task, but, you know, just being here, having your presence here means a lot to the community, because we know that we're not being left alone. And as a school board member, you know, I say the same thing, you know, we don't want to leave our children, that's the last thing we want to do, leave our children, our kids, students alone in this endeavor. So every day, we're trying to see what more can we do. And as a small business owner, I think what can people do to try to help out, I know there's a lot of things being said, oh, you know, we can donate this and donate that, but I think one of the most important things to note is, the way we can help is to defeat this thing, to defeat this thing that we're faced with, and I believe one of the ways, you know, my personal opinion, my healthcare background tells me the, one of the best ways to defeat this is to try to keep to ourselves during this time. The more we can do that, the better. We have some policies in place, we have a lot of things that we've done, if we can do more, you know, I'm all for it. I'm all for backing that up. Recent thing that happened, you know, I know in the U.S., Seattle was one of the first ones hit with this pandemic. When it hit Seattle, this was maybe late January, early February, the numbers just started taking off from there. Now, there's news that, let's say the transmission was one for every one person, three got infected or possibly infected, and it went so on and so on. As you know, this travels exponentially, and a point of, a point five or point something is a big difference. Well, it's not one to three anymore, or one to three point five, it's approximately one to one point two. That's what, that's how it's being transmitted back in Washington at this point. So one to one is a big, big step forward. What happened there? They really started implementing the lockdowns, the stay in place, in shelter in place, that's when the numbers started dropping. And I think we're on the right road here, and I basically ask you guys if you feel that, you know, we need to do something like that, or be a little bit more proactive as a small business owner, as a, as a school board member, as a parent, as a son myself, you know, I'm all for it, and you have my support in doing this. I think it's better to err on the side of caution than not. I, you know, I'd rather have them tell me, no, you know, Dr. Alvarez, you overreacted and this and that, you know, no pasa nada. I'd rather that happen than, you know, you know, what are we going to do? We're a small community, we're a small town, we have great, great, a great healthcare system in our hospitals, in our clinics, but we don't have the numbers. Again, we don't have the numbers in population as the big cities, but we don't want to be faced with a burden of not having enough. You know, we've never, we've never faced that, and we don't want to face that. I think you guys, you know, mentioned it in the last meeting, you know, Mr. Salinas mentioned it, and I think that's well along the lines of what we feel. I know I can't speak for every small business out there, but the key is to get me, to get people like me, back into business, back into work as quick as possible. Whatever that step may be to take, let's try to do it. I know Mr. Antonio Mejia back there, you know, he came online in support of the same thing, you know, as a healthcare provider himself, you know, that's what we do, we try to help, and I think the quicker we can defeat this, the better our economic situation as far as the community will be. And I think, you know, with yours' help, with the help of the county, with the help of us, you know, myself included, you know, that we're at your disposal, at your service for whatever you guys need, and I know we've been working in conjunction, and that's really what we need to do, we need to keep on doing that, provide those measures in place. We have the people that can do this while the members are low, and like I said, you know, es mejor que me digan que no paso nada, the guy overreacted or we overreacted, than to say, why didn't we do enough? And I think, you know, a thousand times, rather than tell me that, and I'll be like, you know, I'll be happy if nothing happens. But we know the numbers are going to go up, we just need to keep control of them, that's what we need to do. Because, you know, around town and all that, I do see a lot less traffic, a lot less people going out there, and that's what it's going to take. If there's a little bit more, let's do it, let's nip it in the bud, let's nip it in the bud and take care of the situation. And that's all I have to say, that I really, I just came in support of you guys. I know I could have, you know, stayed at home, Mr. Mejia told me, you know, I think we should go out there and just let them know that the community is behind them, and it's a tough job, you know, it's tough being in you guys' positions, but at the same time, it can be a very rewarding one, and that's what we're going to hope for. So, and that's all I have to say, and I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, did you want to address the Council also?
No, no. Here.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to resolutions. Consideration of Possible Approval of a Resolution Amending Resolution 2020-17R, Adding Certain Language to Include Stay-at-Home Emergency Measures, Defining Essential Activities and Essential Businesses, To Include Hardware Stores and Retail Businesses, And Implementation of Social Distancing Measures, Limiting The Entrance to One Member Per Family Into All Retail Businesses, The CDB Will Pass, Allowing For Residents Under Age of Seventeen To Attend EPISD Food Distribution Centers, And Other Modifications As Established in Exhibit 1A, Which Is Attached to the Resolution. So.
It's the hard copy made of the, with the red line.
This one right here?
Yes, in Exhibit A, they're also attached.
All right, so just for the public, and just also update the Council. As of today, 5 o'clock, we have had a report of 75 COVID-19 tests administered, 40 have come back negative, 20 are pending, and unfortunately, we got our second positive case today. And what makes it even more, you know, alarming is that it's one of our healthcare professionals. And I applaud Dr. Aliyah for putting it out there as soon as he got the call that he tested positive, he contacted the EOC Center, and he told us he was going to put something out on his website, and he did, on his Facebook. So he, along with DSHS, along with Dr. Valdez, will be monitoring any person, any of his patients that he had contact with over the last 14, 15 days. We are still pending that information, but we know that DSHS will be contacting as well, and they probably started already, and Dr. Aliyah, as I understand, he has already started contacting his patients as well. This is not to put everybody in panic, because not everybody that had contact with him is going to contact, contract the virus. So the citizens need to understand that there will still be those protocols taken by the hospital, by UMC, by Maverick County Hospital District, and any medical provider, they must exhibit the symptoms for them to be tested. So they should not be alarmed, and they should not be, they should not fear if they are not tested. Once again, there are still protocols by CDC that, and the Texas Department of State Health Services, that require the medical professionals to look for the symptoms before they test. So it's important for everybody to know, not everybody's going to be tested. If you go to UMC right now, per se, they are not going to test you unless you're exhibiting those symptoms. That is something we've been in contact all afternoon with UMC, with the hospital, and Maverick County Hospital District. They got an influx of people wanting to be tested, and they're not. They're not going to be tested, once again, unless they have the symptoms. And that's the fever, 100.4 and above, that's the cough, and the difficulty breathing. So we want to put that out there, so people are not alarmed that they're not being tested. They got to meet the criteria, once again, that CDC has put in place for testing to take place, and that's going to be at those facilities. With that being said, we've had a long discussion, right after we got the word that it was a doctor, we know that there's an increase, possible increase in positive cases, because he's had contact with other individuals, other patients. That being said, we got together, Judge Salso and myself, and we had a serious discussion about what we have to do next. And I think, and I applaud Dr. Alvarez for being here, but that is what is being presented on this resolution amending the previous declaration to include the stay at home. Now, the difficult part, and Mr. Salinas, Councilman Salinas was here for a little bit, Councilman Galpando got a little word of it too, on some of the businesses that are going to be affected. And that is something the EOC will be looking at tomorrow, but part of the stay at home includes foreclosing of non-essential businesses. And that is the difficult thing right now, as early as last week when we met, I asked for a list of all businesses that are still open, and to, so we could identify which ones are not considered essential. And so with that list being provided today of all the businesses, they're going to go through it one by one, and I separate the essential, which is retail for grocery stores, that's essential. Clothing stores are not essential. So that is the task that the EOC has before them, if we go with this measure, to identify and really limit the contact of our residents, not just throughout the city, but throughout the county, as the county commissioners' court met a little while ago, and they approved a similar measure. So with that being said, I don't know, there's something you want to add?
I got here, I'm telling you, Mayor.
Okay. So, and the resolution, so I'll just read what we're adding to it, right?
Mayor, pardon the interruption, but did you, did you express some of my concern about also the other?
Yes.
Are we adding that in, about to make sure the safeguards that we're also protecting some of the employees of the, that are at work in essential places, that?
Yes, the problem that encounters there is the supply.
Right.
It makes it difficult, and so.
I mean, maybe like gloves and stuff, you know, disposable gloves, like for people that are stocking shelves, and so, because we don't know who has touched the can, and then also, we don't know who's touching the can to stock it, and that's my concern, to try to defray.
I don't think gloves is as big of issue as the supply as the masks, from what I'm understanding, but that's the thing.
I mean, whatever we can do at this time, I think.
The mayor's concern was to put something in the declaration that these businesses would not be able to comply with, not because they don't want to, but because of a lack of supply. And so it's something that you all can consider, but the enforcement mechanism, if they don't have it, how are we going to, why, or would we enforce them, or cite them, or?
That'd be hard to close down, a grocery store.
Right, you don't want to do that, but I just want to see what we can do to try to safeguard the employees as well.
Now, I will add, been in discussion with management from these grocery stores, they want to do their part, and that's something that we'll definitely discuss.
Because I've seen it in some of the smaller ones, but I mean, you know, like I said, some of the larger, I understand it's a little bit difficult, but maybe whatever they can, whatever they can.
And there's so many.
I mean, yeah, maybe it can be worded as a suggestion instead of an enforcement action, but.
We have suggestion language whenever we put, it is recommended.
Right.
So we can definitely address that, and that way, it's not, it also addresses the concerns as a mayor, not to, if they can't.
I get it, and that's, we discussed it, I wanted to make sure that it was not, you know, we don't want to, well, whatever can be done, to be honest with you, but I mean, I think at that point, I mean, since you're worried about the touch, I mean, I think gloves would be something, would be.
From somebody else.
Also, Council, is there a way that the city can post, and we had talked about this before, but warnings from the city as far as, hey, only one person from the family can go into a grocery store? Because I've gotten calls from owners of stores that are saying, it's hard to us to enforce, so anything that the city can do to help us enforce that, that would be great.
So I've gotten those calls also, Councilman Salinas, and what I've recommended to them is that they go to our web, the city's website, download the declaration, and they'll see the listings that apply to them, and then do it in the form of a posting for their specific business. And that seems to have worked really well, because while they're queuing in line outside, they're, the people are reading, the customers are reading what the restrictions are, and that seems to help. We can do that also, we have it on our website, and I'm sure that, working with our administration and the EOC, they can, they can do a specific bulletin or a post, if you would like.
Yep, the other thing that we took action on yesterday was establishing the task force. We've got officers from multiple agencies, county, city, including Eagle Pass Independent School District, who will be working together to monitor the businesses. That is a concern that businesses have brought up, you know, they don't want to comply, they're going to be able to call the line here, and they'll send somebody over there to assist. I do see a lot less people out there. I think the action, the, the, the U.S., the government took, in terms of restricting even more non-citizens, non-residents from crossing over here for groceries and gas, is going to bring those numbers even lower when you're out in the streets. So that's another action that was taken from the federal government, and once again, our task force is going to be out there, and they're going to have to, everybody's been forwarded a flyer with information they got to comply with, to post at their businesses, and the number to call if they have concerns. So, and our task force will be addressing that. The judge has opened up a court for that, and one thing that people need to understand, or citizens need to understand, in an emergency declaration such as this one, any offense is taken a notch higher, and that's something that's very important, because while you may violate a Class C misdemeanor, when there's a declaration like this, that gets voted up to the next class, and you can.
Certainly, not every one of the criminal violations, there's only enumerated, one step, burglary, assault charges, if I've all seen it, a memo is provided. Yeah, so, yeah, it's a list of about seven or eight that are enhanced. And then you also have your penalty provision, and you'll also have a declaration of $1,000 also. Do you want to discuss, Mayor, the governor's recent proclamation, or do you want to address that in executive session?
We'll address that in executive session, because we got a lot of legal questions right now. I sent you some, but we'll look at them later, okay? So, this resolution being said, the items that we're adding, that I'm asking for the Council to consider amending the declaration is that, Adding Certain Language to Include Stay-at-Home Emergency Measures, Defining Essential Activities and Essential Businesses, To Include Hardware Stores and Retail Businesses, And Implementation of Social Distancing Measures, Limiting The Entrance to One Member Per Family Into All Retail Businesses, The CDB Will Pass, Allowing For Residents Under Age Seventeen To Attend EPISD Food Distribution Centers, And Other Modifications As Established in Exhibit 1A Attached to the Resolution. So if you go to Exhibit 1A or 1B?
It's, I, that's.
It says 1B on this.
It's 1B.
It's 1B?
1B, yes.
Exhibit 1B?
Should be 1B.
Yes.
Whereas on March 27th, 2020, the City Council, the City People pass Resolution 2020-17R, and thereby extended, amended, and modified the second disaster declaration, and then we go on to what's new. It's under Essential Retail on Section 9, under Essential Retail Item D, it's, "To the extent possible, retail establishments included but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, pet food stores, warehouse stores, hardware stores, gas stations, or food patries, that provide or sell food products or household staples, are ordered to establish controls or requirement, to require a minimum of six feet of distance between patrons and lines queuing in front of and inside stores. Controls may include, but are not limited to requiring each person to take a shopping cart replacing markers on the floor." In Section 12, "Entry into retail establishments included but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, pet food stores, warehouse stores, hardware stores, and gas stations shall be restricted to one person per family. No person under seventeen years of age shall be allowed entry into a retail establishment, including but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, pet food stores, warehouse stores, hardware stores, and gas stations as a patron customer. Employees of the grocery store are exempt from this prohibition." And Section 14, "Residents under seventeen years of age are allowed to attend EPISD food distribution locations only for the purposes of picking up food." I think the other one there, adding on that one, I think we also need to include, it's not just picking up food, because some are picking up packets at schools. So we need to include that.
Instructional packets.
And must return directly to their place of residence.
Do you have that, you know, putting, picking up packets? Your version.
And packets, this package.
Instructional packets.
Instructional material?
Instructional material?
And instructional packet.
Material?
Yes. In Section 20, this declaration is issued because of propensity of the virus to spread person to person, and because the virus physically is causing property loss and damage. Is that what we have to add to it?
Yes, now, administration has pointed out that in your regular agenda item, you have a section, an item eight, that also dealt with the emergency contingency planning. I don't know if you were contemplating on addressing additional materials in there from discussions with administration on it. So I don't know if you need to take action now, or hold off until, I didn't know what was discussed, or why this was placed here as item number eight. It was pointed out by Mr. Motu.
Does that have anything to do with the declaration?
Well, the language on the declaration, it includes the specific operations are open or closed, specific departments, but in the other meeting, item number eight, it's one that we want to discuss with Council, how to proceed on the follow-up weeks. So it's an item that we also need to take action, because where, this week is the final two weeks that we say, as I mentioned, we're going to send employees home, so we need to decide whether to extend that, or bring them back, and open departments, or keep departments as close as they are.
I think the declaration should stand as is, because it's until further notice, so we can discuss that separately. Because this is a separate meeting.
Correct. Now that he's pointing out that it's related to administration, it clicked on my end, yes, you can address it separately.
No.
Yeah, so you can proceed, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Mayor, just to be clear, this resolution, it's adding Section 7, right, to the previous one?
Section 7?
Which is a stay-at-home emergency.
Yes, yes. That is what we're contemplating here, taking further steps for stay-at-home. So I do want to point out, we just got another bad news, we got a third case, there's a third positive case. So these are situations that I think we mentioned yesterday's press conference, we knew the next two weeks were going to be critical, and I think we're going to, we're starting to see that today, and it's more important than ever that, you know, we take actions that are going to hopefully protect everybody else out there, including ourselves, and most importantly, the people that are in the front lines are medical professionals, because they're the ones seeing the patients. So they don't know what they're dealing with when they see each patient, and it could be somebody that is going for something else, they're asymptomatic, and I believe Dr. Valdez yesterday mentioned, 20% of the people that have the coronavirus are asymptomatic, so they have no symptoms whatsoever, and they don't know. And then a lot of others will have symptoms, but they're not severe. And so we're hoping we don't get to that third phase where somebody is in critical condition and needs life support, and, but the actions on this particular declaration is to implement the stay at home. And there are businesses that will remain open, and people need to work, and those people will be allowed. Nobody's going to get pulled over, or people are not going to get, not everybody's going to start getting pulled over to see if they're going to work. We're asking everybody to please abide, if there's no need to be out, stay home, okay? And this ordinance, or this declaration, will include what is essential, what is not essential, and then our EOC team will be contacting all those businesses, retail stores that are considered non-essential, and those will have to start shutting down, or until further notice.
We're adding also the language proposed, the recommendation for gloves and if possible.
Any kind of protective, P, what is it?
PB?
Personal protective equipment.
To encourage our essential businesses to provide, you can add that.
I'm asking if that's going to, we need clearance just from the Council.
I would like to, personally, if I need to say it in the paper motion, I will.
Where are we going to add that? Would that be another section?
Just there towards the end of. Well, just there towards the end of.
The projection will figure it out.
Well, that is an additional item towards the end.
Encourage businesses to provide P P.
There was one item, we talked about something like, uh, section seven B. To the greatest extent possible, all essential businesses shop and file with social distancing guidelines established by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, found online, including maintaining six foot social distancing for both employees and the general public. So I don't know if that's somewhere where, and we, how are you gonna word it? And we encourage these essential businesses that remain open to provide protective equipment for their employees.
Yes. It's only a recommendation, it's not a, a shall, it's not an order, there's no, at this point, because of the supply issue, it's only being recommended. We'll add it there, Mayor, I think that's a, that's fine.
I think, you know, I have legal questions on that, I can. I might have to take this to executive session. On the legality of that, I know we got another meeting.
At the end, that's my concern.
Yes. Are you all meaningful to take it to executive session?
I am, I don't have a problem with that.
Is there a motion?
Several.
Motion taken to executive session. Motion by Council, Mayor Proton Davis, by Councilwoman Ramon. What was your concern, I'm sorry.
It's just the timing.
The timing of the meeting, cause we're, we have a posted meeting.
Oh, twenty.
Yeah.
Can we table it?
You can table it also.
And then discuss the other one, and then come back. We have executive session, we can table it for executive session, continue, start the other meeting, and then, or we can have two.
Can we do that? Can we have two meetings at the same time?
Well, we can table this for executive session.
With the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Right, because I think that's what she's saying. We're running too late for the regular meeting.
To start the other meeting, table this.
So we can table it and take it to the other meeting, even though they're not the same? Can we do that?
Correct.
Okay, then do that. Let's do that.
If I need to amend my motion, then it's.
No, we're gonna table, is it gonna be a long discussion?
Yes, that's what we need to do.
Well, it depends.
It depends on the legalities of what we're asking. I hope not.
Well, let's, our, our legal argument issue would be, let's address it now, get it in, out, out of the way, go ahead and move to executive session, let's address it, and then come out and take action. It shouldn't be that long, and hopefully the legal questions that you have.
You got thirty minutes left.
So, five minutes, executive session. So there's a motion by Mayor Proton Davis to go to executive session, table for executive session, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion, all those in favor, raise the right hand. So at this time, we will be going, at this time, five fifty-one PM on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, uh, we're going into executive session under pursuant to section five five-one point zero seven one, chapter five five-one, government code, consultation with attorney over resolution, amending the resolution of, amending Resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen R.
Yes, that's fine, you've already read it to the time.
So, with the record, we're going to executive session.
Correct.
Five fifty-two.
We'll do it here.
Three thirty-one.
We have to.
Yes.
The general public has to.
Yes, I'm sorry, but you would have to.
We're on, Mayor.
With the record, the city council came out of executive session at six oh five PM on March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Moving back to Resolution, amending Resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen R.
Was there, was there a motion, second?
Motion made by Mayor Proton Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion, just, so everybody's on the same page, what we're adding is item number seven, and I'll go ahead and read section seven of the declaration, which has been added. Section seven, stay-at-home emergency measures. A, all individuals currently living within the city legal paths are ordered to shelter at their place of residence. For the purposes of these emergency measures, residences include hotels, motels, shared rentals, and similar facilities. To the extent individuals are using shared or outdoor spaces, they must at all times, as reasonably as possible, maintain social distancing of at least six feet from any other person when they are outside their residence. All persons may leave their residence only for essential activities, or to provide or perform essential governmental functions, or to operate essential businesses, all as defined in section eight and nine herein. B, all businesses operating within the city legal paths, except essential businesses as defined in section nine herein, are required to seize all activities at facilities located within the city. For clarity, businesses may continue operations consisting exclusively of employees or contractors performing activities at their own residences, i.e., working from home. To the greatest extent possible, all essential businesses shall comply with the social distancing guidelines established by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, found online at HTTPS, colon slash slash W W, do I have to read the whole thing? All right. Including maintaining six foot social distancing for both employees and the general public.
Yes, and, and this is.
And we encourage and recommend that businesses provide protective equipment to their employees.
Correct.
C, all public or private gatherings of any number of people occurring outside a single household or living unit are prohibited, except as otherwise provided herein. Nothing in this order prohibits the gathering of members of a household or living unit. D, restaurants with or without drive-in or drive-through services may only provide takeout, delivery, or drive-through services as allowed by law. E, religious and worship services may only be provided by video and teleconference. Religious institutions must limit in-person staff to ten people or less when preparing for or conducting video or teleconference services, and all individuals must follow the social distancing guidelines, including the six-foot social distancing. F, all elective, medical, surgical, and dental procedures are prohibited anywhere in the city of legal paths. Hospitals, ambulatory surgery centers, dental offices, and other medical facilities are directed to identify procedures that are deemed elective by assessing which procedures can be postponed or canceled based on patient risk, considering the emergency need for redirection of resources to COVID-nineteen response. G, if someone in a household has been tested or has tested positive for COVID-nineteen, the household is ordered to isolate at home. Members of the household cannot go to work, school, or any other community function. On this, Eddie.
Yes.
Is there another section when we're including, uh, maybe persons that have been notified that they were in contact with infected people, that they also must remain at home?
Well, when you designated the LHA, the LHA has the authority.
That authority under the LHA section. And so that is a measure that, that's been added, uh, going on to section twelve, what was missing there, we had only, had mentioned only grocery stores, and it was intended to mention all businesses, so that was, that's been updated there. And just adding that the citizens under seventeen on section fourteen, that they are allowed to go pick up food from the food distribution by EPI's D and instructional materials.
Mayor, I just want to say real quick that I think this is something for, that's gonna benefit, obviously benefit the community. We want to make sure that everybody is safe, and we want to make sure that we keep that number low, that number of positives. By restricting people from, from getting out there and being in the community, that's gonna just help us not have any more of people get sick. Unfortunately, like you mentioned, the consequence is that some businesses are going to close, and we just want to make sure that the community understands that we know, and that's the last thing that we want to do is for somebody to close their business. But in order for us to get through this, uh, we must restrict people from being out in the community. And the faster that we do this, the faster that we can come back, and everything will be back to normal. So.
Mayor, if you want to make it clear, all previous declarations issued by the council remain in place?
That is correct, and for the record, all previous declarations, actions will remain in place. These are just additions of the stay-at-home clause, and, and just rewarding of section. Section twelve, to include all retail establishments, all businesses, not just grocery stores. So, and you're right, Councilman Salinas, uh, and I'll say, while this measure that we're taking right now would not have prevented what happened to Dr. Olaya, the fact that he's had contact with citizens, patients, that has brought an exposure to more people, and we need to take this action, so I applaud the council for, for taking the consideration. And I believe we have a motion by Mayor Proton Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon, and if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise the right hand.
Mayor, we recommend you adjourn from this special.
Oh, yeah. So, that was, that was the last item, right?
Yes.
So, a motion made by Councilman Salinas to adjourn, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. I'm sorry. Twenty-five thirty PM, in council chambers, has started establishment according to all members of council being present, uh, at this time, again, a moment of reverence for all our military men and women serving, not only here but abroad, and all our first responders, health, medical providers that are on the front lines of this epidemic that we find ourselves in. And we hope that they are protected and they're able to help those who. Thank you, any citizens' communications recommendations? Going on to ordinances, item number one, consideration of possible approval of an ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning ordinance of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, to amend sections five, C, three, D, one, two, six, C, three, D, one, two, seven, C, three, seven point one, C, three, seven point two, C, three, and twelve, C, seven, regulating the rear yard building setback apartments, and establishing a maximum, maximum impervious cover percentage for R-one and R-two residential districts, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a separability clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Madella?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So just to clarify, there is one change here, seven point two, C, three, should be removed there. That was one we accidentally included in the list, that applies to townhomes, which should not actually be changed by this, cause townhomes already have a smaller setback than what we're implementing with this change, so seven point two, C, three should not be in there. Uh, so this item before you is a discussion, um, mainly to provide more flexibility for developers, home builders, and homeowners, uh, and also to make sure we don't, while, while providing more flexibility, we don't cause additional runoff, which would cause storm drainage problems. Uh, so if you look up at the monitor, the current setback is twenty-five feet. So if you can see the gray area above the white box, that would be basically your, your backyard area, that's area you can't build on, that's setback area that you need to remain, uh, to leave as is, and then again, in the front, you can see a sidewalk and parking area, but everything below the large box, that's your front setback. And then you can see there's five feet setbacks to either side of, of the house as well. So those are all currently in ordinance where a person is not able to, to develop, to build or put impervious structures on. Another item current in our current ordinance, there's a twelve-feet minimum separation from the primary structure, which would be your main house, to when you can build, start a balapa, or some other type of accessory structure. That was a little bit of a not-as-well-known item, we hadn't really been enforcing that too strongly, uh, so, again, that's, that's something else that we're gonna be modifying slightly with this change. Next is accessory structures may not exceed thirty percent of the rear yard area, so, which would be the, basically the gray area above, if you requested a variance to build on your rear yard area, our current ordinance says you can't exceed thirty percent of that. And, um, another point we wanted to make is we get a lot of variance requests, and that's the big reason why Mr. Antuna, you know, brought this item up, and we started really looking at it closely, is if we're constantly getting variance requests to let people build a balapa, let them extend their porch, or do different things, and we're approving those variance requests, why is our rule in there in the first place that doesn't allow it? We're gonna end up letting them when they come and ask for the variance. So that's kind of a big reason for, for bringing this about. And so in this picture, again, this is our current, this is what it would look like for an R-one currently, and the max buildable area would be that white box there, which is actually fairly large, it's sixty feet tall by sixty feet wide, when you take out the twenty-five feet setbacks in front, which that would be like a thirty-six-hundred square foot home, which is very big compared to, you know, the average home here. The next item, so with the changes that are being proposed, you can see the blue strip on the top, um, that would allow for additional building of attached accessory structures. Actually, first, first item I should have mentioned, so the first change is, is reducing the twenty-five-foot rear to twenty-foot rear, making it five-foot less setback, where people can build, uh, their primary structure. The blue zone.
Mr. Madella, does that include the easement?
The easement in the, like an alley in the rear? So that's.
Is that twenty-five feet, including that?
So what I did find, also the rear, an alley for homes that have an easement in the rear, half of that easement does count towards their.
Set, setback, right?
Correct, yes, sir. And that, I'm surprised, that was another very little-known fact, but, but that was one that, while doing the research, was we, we found that in a separate section of the ordinance, not in the, in the zoning for these, but that's a good point that, that you made. So we would be reducing from twenty-five to twenty, attached accessories, so they want to do an attached porch, they can go, they would be able to go out further toward, to the ten-foot mark, ten-foot setback, and then for a detached, so like a separate balapa or storage shed, that would be able to go all the way to five feet from their property line. But in, in allowing all that extra buildable area, we are putting in the maximum fifty percent impervious cover, because if we, if somebody maxed out and built on that whole area that we would, we were allowed, it would basically make a lot more runoff than what's current, and would be more than what our current storm drainage is, is intended to handle. So we're allowing for flexibility, they would be able to do bump outs, various different things, but not build the whole, cover the entire thing, cause that would cause problems. And that was something our, our engineer, um, made a big point, to make sure that we were accounting for that. So here's a brief one, you know, this is quite a good numbers, but in doing research of several cities, Cibolo, Del Rio, Harker Heights, Lotus, Laredo Shirts, we looked for several cities, um, to find their, their dimensional standards and what they put in place, and ours at twenty-five feet rear setback was the most that, that I found out of all those. The next was twenty feet, which was pretty common among Harker Heights, Laredo Shirts, um, and then Cibolo has a ten-foot rear setback, and Del Rio has the smallest, by far, of seven feet. I actually called them to get some input from them to see if they had issues with such a small setback, and, and the lady, the planning director there, said that it worked out well. They haven't had necessarily problems with this particular ordinance having seven, seven-foot rear setback, but just for comparison, we wanted to show what other cities have in place.
Where's Harker Heights?
It's, um.
My question.
It's a, it's further, uh, kind of towards the, um, north of Round Rock, north a little, even further. I happen to include that one because I met the planning director at, at a conference, and he was a very strong director, I learned quite a bit, chatted with him, and got several ideas, so I've been kind of looking at what they have in place, um, pretty often since I, since I met him. And their population is relatively close to ours, so I thought it was relevant to, to use theirs. So a couple of other. So a couple of other details I wanted to quickly mention. So this was where I found in Section 12, a couple of those items that, again, not many people, I didn't know of, and even our, you know, some people in our department weren't enforcing these. So that was the thirty percent required, no more than thirty percent for accessories in the rear. That was the twelve feet, which is highlighted there, twelve feet from the main building to any accessory, detached accessory buildings. And as the mayor just mentioned, the, for any yard where it opens to an alley in the rear, one-half the width of that alley is assumed to be a portion of the required yard, which the mayor pointed out, and I don't think a lot of us knew that before. So again, decreasing the setback requirements increases impervious coverage. That increases stormwater runoff, and so we would need to account for that if there was a large increase. This is an image I found from the U.S. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. Just to give you a little picture, the main thing to look at here is right in the middle is the percent runoff. So on the top left, you can see an image which is depicting just raw land. No building. And you can see there's a ten percent runoff there. And then you move to the right, top right, you got a little, you know, one house on the picture, so ten to twenty percent impervious surface that bumps up to twenty percent runoff, which you see right in the middle. You come down to the next row, you get to thirty-five to fifty percent impervious surface, which is basically our residential areas, and you get to thirty percent runoff. And then the last one is more of a dense, like a downtown-type of area where you have seventy-five to a hundred percent impervious, and that jumps up the runoff to fifty-five percent. The key thing I wanted to, I thought this was relevant, was going all the way from nothing to a hundred doesn't make a hundred percent, doesn't make it a hundred percent more runoff. It goes from ten percent to fifty-five percent. So we want to kind of stick in this zone here of basically where we are currently, which is in the thirty-five to fifty percent area. Currently, based on our setbacks, if you factor in all those setbacks and you build out to the maximum of our current ordinance, an R1 could cover fifty-five percent, fifty-five percent impervious cover, and R2, fifty-two percent. So if you look back at that image, we're pretty much right here, which is an average for a lot of all residential areas in most cities.
So you're saying we would be, by changing this, we would be going by, what was the approximate increase of runoff?
So we would be implementing a maximum of fifty percent for R1. So we would technically actually reduce the maximum that somebody could build on. Because right now, if somebody did the max, it would be fifty-five percent impervious cover. We're going to implement a fifty percent max. So they'll be able to go further back, like a bump out. Let's say they wanted to do an attached porch, they wanted to do maybe a master suite that bumps out or a larger living room extension, they just couldn't fill up the hole all the way to the new setback. So again, it slightly minimizes the max impervious cover, but gives more flexibility.
Okay.
And then for R2, it's currently fifty-two percent, which we're going to be implementing a maximum of fifty-five. When I researched other cities, most more dense, smaller lots had a slightly higher impervious cover, maximum allowable of fifty-five percent. So here's some examples, so you can visualize what we're talking about. So here's an R1 on the left, and an example of what somebody would be able to do with this fifty percent max that we want to implement. So they would be able to build a main structure of sixty by forty-six, which is twenty-seven-hundred square feet, still fairly large, put in a twenty by twenty balapa, and that's honoring the five percent detached accessory setback, and do their required parking sidewalks, and still be within the fifty percent maximum. So basically allows people to do what a lot of people want to do these days without having to go to a variance to request permission for their gazebos or balapas and things like that. On the right, here's another example of what somebody could do. That's an attached porch bump out off of the back. That would be a thirty by twenty shown there with a sixty by forty-two main structure. So basically, things like, things that we see, people request, people might want to do, they would be able to do it without having to go through all the extra process of going through a variance. Here's R2, a couple of examples. So again, this one has a slightly higher fifty-five percent maximum level. This, here's an example where it honors a twenty-five-foot front setback. The main structure is forty by forty-four. They've got a fifteen by thirty balapa and a small storage shed, eight by ten, and they're still within, under the fifty-five percent maximum. And over here, if somebody really wanted to max it out, they could build all the way to the new sixteen-foot rear setback that would be in place for R2s, have a small attached porch and required parking, and again, they're still within the fifty-five percent max impervious cover. So here's a summary of the changes that are being proposed. The R1 rear setback would be reduced from twenty-five feet to twenty. R2 from twenty-five feet to sixteen feet. R3, the same, from twenty-five to sixteen. R3A apartment, same, twenty-five to sixteen. R1, we would be implementing a maximum impervious coverage of fifty percent, which that includes anything, either anything that doesn't absorb water, concrete, stone, roof structure, all those fall under impervious cover. R2 would have a maximum of fifty-five percent. In the R1, R2, and R3 districts, the building minimum distance from primary to accessory, like a balapa, would go from twelve to ten. We did talk to the fire marshal about this, and he sees no issue. We have still a safe distance. And then the last item on the proposed changes is the removing the accessory buildings shall not occupy more than thirty percent of the required minimum rear yard area. We're removing that because we're already implementing a lot-wide maximum, so there's no need to have a maximum on the rear yard itself. So those are, that's a summary of everything. And the planning department is recommending these changes. We reviewed and researched several other cities. A lot of cities do have these maximum impervious covers in place. And so we felt like we would, implementing this while allowing for more flexibility would be a win-win for everyone. So our recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the ordinance amendments as presented. Any questions?
The engineer, y'all did review this to make sure that there would be no any kind of, I guess, adverse effects perhaps with stormwater runoff and that type of stuff to whether our current infrastructure already in place? I just want to do something that might enhance flooding issues and stuff, but that's my concern.
No, I agree. And so that was the initial concern with me as well, and I contacted Mr. Madara, but I think Mr. Madara has gone a little beyond doing the research. And so after my concern was brought up, he implemented the maximum cover. And so I agree with that. We discussed all the percentages until they're in line with what we believe.
Okay. And of course, this is going to apply to anybody that goes and does things the right way. Because there's many others that don't go through the process.
That's right.
And those are things that we need to consider.
And I think that's why we're doing this, because we want to encourage people to do it the right way. And if they got to go to the variance component and have to pay fees and more... I mean, you still have to go to the permitting process to put the variance component that would be that much more intense and intrusive in many cases. So that's why we're here, to avoid that.
So, motion made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Mayor Protem Davis. I got that one right? Is there any further discussion? None being, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Went on to ordinance, number two, consideration of possible approval of an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory lying adjacent to and adjoining the present boundary limits of said city consisting of a tract consisting of a total of one-hundred-twenty-eight point nine-three-four acres composed of a five-point-one-seven-acre tract vacant land located in survey six, abstract one-one-one-zero, out of land conveyed to WICO and Associates, OTD, described and indeed recorded in volume four-two-nine, pages ninety-eight to one-oh-six of the Maverick County, Texas official public records. Maverick County, Texas, and a one-one-point-two-zero tract parkland area located in survey six, abstract one-one-one-zero, survey three, abstract nine-nine-seven, survey nine-three-four-three-quarters, abstract one-two-four-three, survey thirty-one and a half, abstract one-zero-nine-one, survey thirty-one-third, abstract one-two-three-eight, and survey twenty-seven, abstract eight-four-zero, and a thirteen-point-five-six acre tract detention pond located in survey nine-three-four-three-quarters, abstract one-two-four-three, and survey thirty-one and a half, abstract one-zero-nine-one, both described and indeed to the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, recorded in volume one-seven-seven-six, pages two-seventy-nine to two-eighty-seven of the Maverick County, Texas official public records, authorizing implementation of the service plan for said territory, assigning thereto permanent zoning district classification. All is described herein and providing for an effective date. Mr. Madara?
Thank you for reading all that, Mayor.
You should have said something.
So the summarized version of everything that Mayor just read for us is that this is a required part of the annexation process. So this is, this ordinance is the first reading of the ordinance, which provides for the extension of the boundaries of the city of Eagle Pass. Again, we discussed the specific numbers, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight acres, of which five-point-one-seven-four are owned by WICO and Associates. The other is part of the city, what was donated to the city for parkland and for detention pond purposes. Again, we covered this during the other public hearing portions of this annexation process, but here's a depiction of it with some drawings of where the proposed field will be. Pretty zoning map to see the location behind the coys. We are here at the March thirty-first meeting, first reading of the ordinance. Enactment will have two more readings that will take place April seventh and twenty-first as part of the process. So the motion is to approve this, to approve and adopt the ordinance to extend the, for the extension of the certain boundaries specified under this annexation. Any questions on this first item?
Second. Motion made by Mayor Protem Davis, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. And any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number three, consideration of possible approval of an ordinance adopting a new Section twenty-two-dash-nine-one-point-two, Article Six, Chapter Twenty-two, streets, sidewalks, and other public places of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eagle Pass, adopting provisions for the use of the art and cultural center, adopting UPs, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, council, good afternoon. We previously talked about this ordinance, but unfortunately, we had the table at the previous meeting. But just to summarize, what we did discuss is basically our thought process in the use of the art and cultural center is to split it into three types of events. So we have city events, city-sponsored events. We have partnerships with nonprofits and for-profit entities, and then we have rentals. And by rentals, I do want to specify, this is where we mean that somebody comes in and wants to rent the whole facility for an event or occasion that's strictly for them. And so what the ordinance is proposing is that we not allow rentals that are strictly for private purposes, mostly because of liability reasons associated with the facility. For city events and sponsorships, of course, those would be allowed, and it would be up to the city manager to decide what's in the best interest of the city. And then we have our partnerships with nonprofits and for-profits. So what we wanted to make sure that we included in this ordinance is that we had a fair and open process for the community to propose different things that could be held at this site. For the most part, well, the goal of the facility is to enhance art and culture in our community. So first and foremost, the events have to meet that goal. When it comes down to art, the question comes up, well, what type of art? And that's where we really need to hear from the community, you know, what kind of art can they offer to the community? And then the city will evaluate what's the best use of that facility. So under that section, it does include an open proposal process where citizens would be able, organizations would be able to submit, this is what I think would be a good use of that facility, and then we would negotiate a contract with those that were selected. And ultimately, those contracts would come back to the city council for final approval. That's the gist of what's in the ordinance. There's also separate provisions that are identical to those at the ICT, just general rules and guidelines on what it can and can't be used for, such as political activity, of course, because it is a government facility, can't take place there. They cannot broadcast without some approval. It's basically the same provisions that are at the ICT. But this is the gist of what we wanted to get into the ordinance, so that we knew from the council, what are your expectations on the use of this facility?
I thought we had discussed rentals last time. I never get mentioned about the rentals that you were afraid because of the possible damage, but I mean... No, that's why I brought it up. I know it's a concern. I mean, is there a damage waiver? I'm sorry, that's what they, go ahead. Picking up in your thoughts, sir. So you're saying now not to rent it out?
Yeah, that's what we had proposed the first time.
The first time?
Yeah, that we did not feel it was appropriate. Now, if the city is sponsoring an event, that's covered under a city event. This is where somebody comes to the city and says, hey, I want to have a private event there strictly for my guests only, that type of, that, not where the city is affiliated at all. So anything that the city wants to have there, whether it's a concert or an event, that we would be able to do then. But nobody could come and outright say whoever invites the only people that can use this facility.
I think last time you mentioned that it wouldn't be a good idea because of the liability as far as the art that's up there and all that, right?
Correct, because right now, the art that's there depends on which artist loaned us the art because it is not our property. And so if we do rent it out, whenever we do rent it out, we would have to remove all of the art just to secure it, not just the logistics involved with it, the liability associated with it, because some art there is valued highly by those artists. The city would, could be liable.
Would Kansas City events would be sponsored?
That would really be up to...
What kind of stuff, like what they have there, like with the Main Street, the art classes, that type of stuff?
Exactly.
The only thing I'm trying to think, you know, just trying to identify the way... I would think that rentals, like, maybe if you were to have some kind of an agreement with the artists displaying there, to like a whole harmless agreement. And I'm trying to say like the rentals, and I'm not saying that you want to rent it out as a party room, but what if you want to have, I don't know, the border realtors wants to have a meeting there? That type of stuff, that's maybe more like a conducive meeting type, that might, it's a smaller setting or someone's having, you know, maybe the lines are trying to have the district area that it's a small group, under a hundred people, whatever the capacity is. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that type of an issue. I mean, it's, I think it's more of it becomes like, you know, it's less of, it's not like rapinata. I mean, you know, maybe pardon the phrase, I mean, you know, you're not going to have people running around. If you have an adults there, I don't think you would have that issue, but, I mean, just... I'm trying to convince, consider, so if we can use it as a rental, why not?
Okay, rent. Because I thought, wouldn't that fall under the city sponsorship, but not if it would be a rental?
Let's see. That's what I'm trying to figure out, would that be like a partnership? I think the example you gave falls more into that city event sponsorship because if we're going to have, say, a Rotary Club meeting, I think that's something that could be... That would be like a sponsorship or like a partnership? Was that... If that's, if that's giving us that latitude, then I guess it's okay, then I'm okay with it. But I just want to make sure that, you know, you know...
Yeah, I think...
I'd like to see if you lies and not just...
Ligo might be able to provide a bit more guidance on this, but if we did open it up, have the ordinance saying it's up for, for a certain fee, you can rent the facility, could we limit it to a type of renter, or does it have to be open?
Well, without...
You're going to have, no, you can't, you're going to have to comply with the state and federal guidelines with respect to not having discriminatory practices.
That was our concern when putting it together, is like, where do you draw the line and say, okay, this event, this type of organization can, but this organization can't?
All right, I guess what we did with that was a little, I guess, just to try to make sure that we don't limit ourselves...
sure that we, we don't limit ourselves to, we don't have to, but no, I'm buying with that.
We will still be getting fees.
I remember thinking the same.
From the partnerships.
Partnerships.
So I know one of the discussions that we had, what, the, the biggest use of this partnership with nonprofit or for-profit would be with the artists themselves, because those that want to display their art there will have to enter into an agreement. Now, we will charge a fee. I think economic development's idea is that if a piece of art is sold, we would get a percentage of that sale. And so that's the way the city would recoup its money. Again, since there's so many different types of events, art exhibits and things of that nature that can be held, we didn't want to set a certain fee guideline.
Gotcha.
Rather leave it up to each proposal will come in, we'll evaluate it, we'll come to council, council will approve it, and that's what we'll stick to, in terms of the fees and all the.
But there's got to be consistency also.
Right.
Yes, but if we have events where they want to teach the, the painting, of course, it's, do we charge the person who's going to, the, the student, or are we going to charge the teacher to use it?
Those.
Those that are going to, yeah, so it's, it really varies on the type of event.
Yeah, I mean, that's what becomes the difference, like you're saying, I can hear what you're saying, where it becomes, whether it's a for-profit or it's a non-for-profit.
Who would set, set the fee structure?
So the recommendation would come from administration, but it would come to, to council for, for approval.
I guess until we build a, what is it, like, depending by history, I guess, then we can consider making, making it more.
You see, the last thing that we want, Jesse, I think, is that for citizens to come and say, okay, so why don't you all build this if we can't even use it, you know? And I think that's where the, I guess, partnership, nonprofit and for-profit, you know, if you want to have ten guests and teach your class there, well, then obviously that requires a fee, whether it's from each one of the, the participants or from the person organizing project, because we don't want to have, you know, we want people to use it, not misuse it. And so we don't want to have them come back and say, well, why don't you all use our taxpayers', our money to build it, and then we can't use it, you know? So, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's a difficulty we had, is because going through what it could be used for, there were just so many different options, that we don't want to, you know, we don't want to restrict ourselves too much.
Right, that's my concern.
Because we don't want to have it just there and not be used, but what's, you know?
For example, I want to display my artwork. How long am I going to have it there?
And that's where those contracts come.
And that's the thing. If we don't have an artist displaying anything, why wouldn't we make it available at rentals? Maybe we should consider rentals in situations where it's not being used, you know? If there's artists being displayed, then no, it's off limits. But if nobody has displayed, why wouldn't we want to try to rent it?
You get into the issue that you have to rent it to everybody.
Well, no, it's just on the availability. If it's already taken up by an artist, then it's not available.
Yeah, it'll be blocked off.
Right.
Yeah, so we can include that, rentals are only allowed when not utilized for other purposes.
I don't know how much of a nightmare we're going to get making.
But there's no, contracts, artwork displayed. I, I think it's an opportunity to get people downtown. That's just another opportunity there. And that's one thing that I think we all agree, we need to revitalize downtown. And so if we're, we're closing doors to certain opportunities, then we're closing doors to getting people downtown. And so I think we need to consider, when somebody wants to display their artwork, we need to consider, okay, a timeframe, and then we remove it so it becomes available for other functions. That's the same. This is the first reading?
First reading.
Yes, it's the first reading.
Still plenty of time to be changed.
And then we can always see how things work and change them in the future, right?
Of course.
I mean, maybe, I mean, because that joke can give us like a template of what, what it's looking like. I mean, that way we can look at it, because maybe we're, we're limiting to the use by doing that, but I mean, you know.
Because these have several events there, right?
Exactly.
Several events have taken place already.
Very successful.
And have all they been steady sponsored events?
They, that's what they've been classified as. And this is, you know, this is why we wanted to get this implemented, especially this section.
Yes, I agree with you, because we need to make sure it's there.
We need more structure.
And moving forward, we will also, you know, especially we want to go into the rental component, make sure that we have proper insurance to cover.
Exactly.
Not only themselves.
Damage and liability.
From themselves, but us from themselves.
Yeah, indemnified. Yeah, because we want to make sure, I mean, because I know one thing is to say that it's a partnership, but you don't want it to have all the liability on the city.
No, yes.
I mean, you know what I mean, we need to make sure that we're being indemnified.
Yes.
Is that it? So is the presentation?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Someone?
Motion made by Mayor Potem Davis, second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion?
So you're going to look at those things?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number four, second reading of an ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning ordinance of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, to delete sections eight, seventeen-eight, and nine-point-one-thirty-five-eight for used car lots, adding new subsection thirteen to section ten to allow for used car lots, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing effective date. Mr. Madad, I know this is the second reading, but I do have some legal questions, but I'd like to take this item into executive session, if that's okay with anybody making that motion.
So moved.
Motion made, take to executive session by Mayor Potem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Going on to resolutions, item number five, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of a grant application with the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Homeland Security Grants Division for a conversion to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRS, grant, authorizing the city manager to act on behalf of the city of Eagle Pass in all matters related to the application, and pledging that if a grant is received, the city of Eagle Pass will comply with the grant requirements of the Office of Governor and the State of Texas.
Mayor, Council, this resolution was passed by council, I believe, last month. The grant agency got back to us with our application and requested a minor change to the resolution, just to specify the grant number and the grant period. So those changes have been made onto the resolution. All the other information is the same.
This is our motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Potem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Other business, number, item number six, consideration and possible ratification of change orders for the public safety headquarters.
One more time, two, two more times. Number six and seven, we're actually going to recommend that we go into executive session. There are some questions regarding the bond ordinance and contract negotiations regarding these change orders. So that's our recommendation.
Is there a motion?
Motion made by Mayor Potem Davis, take to executive session, second by Councilman Salinas. All those in favor, unanimous. Going on to executive session items, item number eight, executive session pursuant to five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion of personnel matters regarding the use of an emergency contingency plan for city of Eagle Pass operations, and possible action in open session regarding same. Item number nine, executive session pursuant, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel on the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property offered by Union Pacific Railroad, possible action in open session regarding same, including but not limited to authorizing mayor to submit a notice of intent of quiet zone areas to the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, and directing administration to initiate the notice of hearing process and public meeting requirements, and legal to negotiate agreements in relation to possible street closures. And going back to item number four, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, and discussion, the second reading of ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning ordinance of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, to delete sections eight, seventeen-eight, and nine-point-one-thirty-five-eight for used car lots, adding new subsection thirteen to section ten to allow for used car lots, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. And also going into executive session, pursuant to sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion and consideration and possible ratification of change orders for the public safety headquarters. That's item six, executive session, item seven, executive session pursuant to five, sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion on consideration and possible approval of a change order for the sports complex. So let the record reflect, the city council went into executive session at six fifty-nine PM on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Let the record reflect that council came out of executive session at eight fifty-four PM on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Moving on to item number four, on the second reading of an ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning ordinance, on the, of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, to delete sections eight, seventeen-eight, and nine-point-one-thirty-five-eight for used car lots, adding new subsection thirteen to section ten to allow for used car lots, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Madad?
Yes, Mayor, this is the second reading. We do have the two additional items that were mentioned at the last meeting in terms of grandfather clause, as well as for immediate family members. That was added to the recommendation from the department is to proceed with the adoption of the ordinance amendment in order to move the allowable zoning for used car lots, which will refer to as used motor, used motor vehicle sales move forward from the B-one, B-three to industrial.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? This is the second reading, it's still a third. Any other additions the council wanted them to consider for the next one?
Mayor, we know that you mentioned to them that you wanted to maybe consider how many vehicles. Do you want to address that at the next reading for us to come up with?
Yes. Is there a standard on, you know, how many vehicles can be put in a lot?
Yes.
Look that up.
Thank you for reminding. So there's a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. For, for it? All those against? One
Thank you, blessed.
Going on to other business, item number six, consideration and possible ratification of change orders for the public safety headquarters. Vanessa?
Yeah, so what I have before you is a change order for scope of work that includes electrical and HVAC changes at the public safety headquarters, and these changes total up to twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars with ninety cents. The recommendation, both from the architect and the engineering department, would be to approve the change order.
Is there a motion?
Um.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilwoman Gialpando. Any further discussion? And thank you for working to keep those costs down. No other, for discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of a change order for the sports complex.
Yes, so before you, I do have a change order that includes several items. As part of change order number one, for the sports complex for the city of Eagle Pass, we do have one item that includes sanitary sewer and domestic water realignment. Two, it's an additional scope for earthwork. Number three, dumpster padding closure. Number four and five are both associated with the monument sign at the sports complex, which will include additional CMU block and footing, along with aluminum letters for the sign. And finally, primary electric. Now, as part of these six items that are identified as part of change order one, the engineering department would like to recommend approval of one, three, four, five, and six, and we would like to recommend denial of item number two. Now, the ones that we do recommend approval for, those total up to a hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand with thirty-four dollars. Now, there was a discussion that we had where that funding was going to come from. We do have an owner contingency and a contractor contingency as part of the sports complex project, and those contingencies cumulatively are a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So with that, we have a delta of thirty-eight thousand with thirty-four dollars, and we did have a discussion with finance department where those thirty-eight thousand dollars would come from. There is some additional funding that we would be looking to reallocate from the CIP into the sports complex project. And so with that, we would recommend approval, as stated previously, for items one, three, four, five, and six of change order one for the sports complex.
Denial of two.
And denial of either two.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Gialpando?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that, and this is where we're going to pull out the forty thousand from, right?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay. We will be pulling it from CIP, so other projects that we currently have funded through CIP, we will be pulling it from there.
Yes, and I just want to make sure that we, like, we only do this this time. We don't want to tap into that money that we had allocated for something else. I mean, of course, unless it's a, you know, real emergency, but otherwise, because we also need to concentrate, especially now, we need to concentrate on, on downtown.
Yes, the other item I'd just like to make of the record is the electrical, or the electrical money that we will have to be paying directly to Rio Grande Electric for running the electric power, which is also what we discussed, that will also have to be reallocated from CIP. But again, that's not going through HELOCs, so it'll be going straight through the city of this mess.
So there's a motion and a second.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to executive session, item number eight, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion of personnel matters regarding the use of an emergency contingency plan for the city of Eagle Pass operations, and possible action in open session regarding same. Jesse?
Mayor, Council, the recommendation from administration is focused on the safety of our employees. And as such, the recommendation is to provide an additional eight days of paid emergency leave to all full-time employees with the same stipulations that were approved with the previous emergency leave. So those include that they are, they are mandated to stay within Maverick County, stay at home, follow the guidelines of the city unless, you know, for emergency purposes or to, to get needs. And also, the recommendation is to provide the authorization for city manager to approve a cash-out option for those who have to stay on the line. And it's only fair to compensate all employees as equally as possible. And so we want to make sure that those employees who do not have that opportunity to take the leave because they work in the fire department, police department, or other essential services, do have that option. But that option would be for them to either take their leave at a later date or receive a cash-out option at half of their pay rate. It'd be, it would be into that.
But that leave must be used by December thirty-first.
Yes, along with the previous leave that was approved.
Jesse, and this is only for the eight days that are coming up, not for this last two weeks then. Those weeks will be allowed to use as they wish, right, as vacation time?
Yes.
This is for the next eight.
So the, the leave that's currently approved is through this Friday, Friday of this week. The employees that are deemed essential to stay on the job, they can also opt to cash out these last two weeks as well.
Okay.
So they'd be have, they have those ten days.
The last two days and the eight days.
The majority of employees will be taking the leave. That, that, that is our goal, because we do want to make sure that there's as few people here as possible, while still providing essential services. But those who cannot, would have that option, it'd be up to them to either take it at a later date or receive a cash-out.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? Ivan?
Oh, okay. Okay.
No further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Item number nine, executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two of Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel on the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property offered by Union Pacific Railroad, possible action in open session regarding same, including but not limited to authorizing mayor to submit a notice of intent of quiet zone areas to the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, and directing administration to initiate the notice of hearing process and public meeting requirements, and legal to negotiate agreements in relation to possible street closures. Ivan?
Mayor, council, our recommendation is to allow city manager to negotiate and execute this agreement to be able to continue the process for the quiet zones, putting a limit of no more than twenty thousand for this contract.
Now, this is, this is part of the thing that we've been looking at, to establish quiet zones. And to do so, we got to take that step.
Yes, sir.
That study has to be made.
This is the first step to be able to get it through, estimate as to how much it's going to cost. You want to continue the cost of the quiet zones. So this is a required step that we need to...
This is just for a study?
This is just for an assessment as to how much, as to what's needed and the cost to continue the process.
There's possible things that need to be done at crossings for us to be even considered for a quiet zone, and this will tell us what exactly we need to do at each crossing to... And then, if it's not feasible, or it's not allowed, we're not qualified for quiet zones, and it's a moot point, right?
Yes, sir.
But we need to have the study to see.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilwoman Gialpando. Any further discussion? Then being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. A German? Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Salinas. I know you all want to discuss this one. No? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous.
I won.
Agreed, it's nine oh five.